Yes, I'll send a email right now. And also let you know that it's gonna-
When you're not talking.
All right, do you hear me now? Thank you.
We can't mute them here.
Yes, we hear you, Cal.
Yeah, you just have to press the mute button on your phone.
If you mute those, they can't hear us. They can't hear us, right?
They can hear us. Okay, tell me when you're ready.
Oh, we're ready.
By teleconference, the City of Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Board meetings are now in session. Today is Tuesday, March 24th, 2020. It is 6:02 PM. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
United States of America.
And to the repo of where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Roll call, please. Oh, wait a minute. Let me read the beginning.
Okay.
This meeting is being held by the procedures in accordance with the Governor's Executive Order, November dash two-nine dash two-zero issued on March 17th, 2020 regarding the open meeting requirements of the Brown Act and the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act in an effort to help prevent the spread of COVID-19, to maximize transparency and provide public access to city council meetings. Members of the city council will teleconference into this meeting. There may be a delay in communications through this process, so please bear with us. Public comments will be received, and when I open an item for comment, any email comments to the city clerk before this meeting have been distributed to the city council and will be part of the record. For public comment during the meeting, email cityclerk@riverbank.org with the item number in the subject line. I'll call, area code two-zero-nine-eight-six-three-seven-one-seven-two. Only one call can be received at a time. You are encouraged to email cityclerk@riverbank.org to comment. For public viewing, meetings are televised on Charter Government Channel Two and AT&amp;T U-verse Government Channel Six-Ninety-Nine. Please, again, bear with us as we use new methods of conducting council meetings. At this time, roll call, please.
Council Authority Member District Two Cindy Fossey.
Here.
Council Authority Member District Three Cal Campbell. Cal, are you present?
I'm mute your phone.
Here.
Thank you. Council Authority Member District Four Darlene Barbara Martinez.
Council Barbara Martinez, are you there?
Mayor, she just sent me a text. She's gonna hang up and call back in.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Chair Luis Uribe.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here.
Council Authority Member Darlene Barbara Martinez, is he there?
It may just take a moment, but when she calls back in, you'll hear a beeping noise.
So we'll move on. She's stepped out of the room. She'll come back in. There'll be no agenda changes today. Any conflict of interest from staff or authority members, city council member, on any items on this schedule is to declare their conflict at this time. Councilmember Barbara Martinez has declared a conflict with item five-point-two fireworks ordinance amendments and recused, will recuse herself. Public comment, no action can be taken. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council LRA board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the city council LRA board. Public comments will be accepted for the next two minutes. If there are no public comments during that time, we'll move on to the next item. Councilmember Barbara Martinez, are you back online?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Vice Mayor Uribe. I did, I was forwarded a public comment to be read during this time. Are we gonna have the city clerk read this?
Vice Mayor, that was received prior to. Everyone has received it, and it has been put into our record.
Thank you.
You did.
Saying no public comment input, we'll move on to the consent items, consent calendar consisting of item three-point-A wave readings, item three-B adoption of a resolution to amend Riverbank's election district based on map G to add Crossroads West Pacific Plan Annex Territory to the nearest existing council member residing districts, and directing the city clerk to forward the territory's certified legal description and amended map G to the Stanislaus County Registrar of Voters. Item three-C, a resolution to award city civil engineering services to Giuliani and Cole, Inc., authorize city manager to enter into a contract and perform general municipal engineering services for the City of Riverbank and negotiate contracts as needed based on, based with, basis with Govia Engineering, Inc., for project-specific civil engineering services and Jelson Sinek and Newson, Newdeck, KSN, Inc., as needed for engineering services for wastewater and water projects. Is there anyone from the council or public wishing to pull any of these items? Can I have a motion from one of the council members?
I'll make a motion. This is Vice Mayor Uribe. I'll make a motion. Will you approve the consent calendar as stated?
This is councilmember Darlene Barbara Martinez. I second the motion.
We have a motion to approve and a second. We will go by roll call vote.
Council Authority Members Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell. Councilmember Campbell. Council Authority Member Fossey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Uribe.
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell, are you present? Motion passes four-zero.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Five-zero.
This is Cal Campbell.
Okay. We got your vote, Councilmember Campbell. Motion passes five-zero.
Item four-point-one, second reading by title only of ordinance number twenty-twenty-dash-zero-zero-four, approving a development agreement number zero-two-dash-twenty-nineteen for the River Run subdivision residential project APN zero-six-two-dash-zero-two-one-dash-zero-zero-eight.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and members of the council. This is the second reading of the River Run subdivision development agreement. The project remains the same as when it was last presented to you. We'll extend the map life and allow this project to move forward as has been previously approved, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Are there any questions? Saying none, I will open for public comment. I'll open it for the next two minutes. If we receive none, then we'll move on to the next item. Not the phone number. Does anyone from the public that needs the phone number again? It is two-zero-nine-eight-six-three-seven-one-two-two. Or you can email cityclerk@riverbank.org, and we will read your comments openly.
So there's on channel ten and ninety-one, we have it on the screen. Okay, thank you.
No public comment. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-twenty-dash-zero-zero-four, approving development agreement number zero-two-twenty-nineteen for the River Run subdivision residential project APN zero-six-two-dash-zero-two-one-dash-zero-zero-eight?
This is Cindy Fossey. I make a motion. Will you approve it?
And I second.
We have a motion to approve item four-point-one as stated and a second.
Councilmembers Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Uribe.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five-zero.
Public hearing. Item five-point-one, a resolution to adopt a one-dollar application fee for a sidewalk vending permit in the City of Riverbank.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a cleanup item from sidewalk vending report that was given to council a couple of months ago. Just real quickly, the background. In September of 2018, Governor Jerry Brown at the time signed SB nine forty-six, the Safe Sidewalk Vending Act, which established the statewide governance of vending in the public rights-of-way and in public parks. Local authorities only have the ability to regulate and enforce sidewalk vending if they adopt an ordinance which is consistent with nine forty-six. In 2019, Riverbank adopted ordinance number twenty-nineteen-zero-zero-six, but did not adopt a fee at that time. The business license, the vendors are required to get a business license separate of any kind of other permitting fees. Just for real quick verification, our standard processing fee is $25. The quarterly license fee is $18.75. There is a state transaction fee assessed on all business license of $4 quarterly or $4 yearly. Currently, no vendor at Riverbank has a business license for vending from a bicycle or cart. Staff proposed a sidewalk vending permit fee of one dollar per quarter. SB nine forty-six does provide for administrative penalties for sidewalk vending violations. So essentially, if you're not complying with our standards or you don't have a permit, those violations would be at $100 if no valid permit. The second violation bumps up to 200, and each additional violation within one year could be up to as much as $500. The general plan overarching goal is related to economic development, planning for a community where businesses can thrive and attract wealth and create jobs and income for local residents, generate revenue for local government, serve local market needs, and help revitalize older neighborhoods. There's a number of general plan policies. I won't go through every single one, but they all relate to economic development and business growth. And the concept of the nominal fee was something that was actually raised by the city council that since we have very little say in this matter as a result of SB nine forty-six, there should be a nominal fee, which is really just intended for us to make sure that those that should be licensed are getting licensed and that we have a list of those for record-keeping purposes. So we made it as nominal as possible, one dollar, and we're recommending council adopt that tonight, which will allow us to get out to all of our vendors and make sure we get proper paperwork for each one of them. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. At this time, I'm gonna open it up for public comment. The public comment period is now open and will be accepting comments for the next two minutes for the initial comment. If there's more than one, we'll continue keeping it open until all public comments have been completed. If you would like to, you email the cityclerk@riverbank.org or calling two-zero-nine-eight-six-three-seven-one-two-two. While we're waiting for public comment, are there any questions from the city council?
Vice Mayor Uribe here. Just clarifying the call-in phone number I'm showing here on the agenda, eight-six-three-seven-one-seven-two.
It is seven-one-two-two.
No, seven-one-seven-two.
I'm sorry, seven-one-seven-two. I said two-two.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yes, that is correct. Seven, eight-six-three-seven-one-seven-two.
I do have a question on this item. Our sidewalks, because now the social distance is now six feet, our sidewalks are, a lot of places are only six feet. Are we violating that social interaction?
Well, I think that like any transaction that you may have at a retail establishment or a drive-thru, the goal is to try to maintain six feet on a regular basis. Obviously, if there's a quick transaction to purchase something, I think that's kind of been accounted for, but in general, I think you're correct that we, if we see vendors, it'll just be like any other business. If we see any business not observing with regularity the six-foot rule, we'll be telling them that they need to, per the governor's order.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna close public comment and bring it back to the council. Is there a motion to adopt a resolution to approve a one-dollar application fee for sidewalk vending permits?
Vice Mayor Uribe here. I'll make a motion. Will you approve item five-point-one?
Councilmember Barbara Martinez, I second item five-point-one.
We have a motion to approve and a second on item five-point-one.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Uribe.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five-zero.
Item five-point-two, first reading by title only, an introduction of a proposed ordinance amending section ninety-two-point-two-eight issuance of permit non-transferability duration under the fireworks sales and discharge subsection in section ninety-two-point-four-three, administrative fines, and section ninety-two-point-four-four administrative appeals hearing under fireworks regulation and enforcement subsection to chapter ninety-two, fire protection and prevention under title nine general regulations of the City of Riverbank Code of Ordinances.
Thank you, Mayor. As council will recall, last year was our first year of aggressive firework, illegal firework enforcement.
A second. At this time, councilmember Barbara Martinez, are you gonna recuse yourself?
Yes, I am. This is councilmember Barbara Martinez, and I recuse myself from item five-point-two.
Thank you.
Thank you. So as council recalls, we adopted this in 2018. In July of 2019, we initiated our first campaign and associated enforcement activities with regard to illegal fireworks. The ordinance, when it was written, took into account the totality of the ordinance, and so now that we have one year's experience, we've been made aware of a few items that we think council should consider as cleanup. The city clerk and planning and building manager did an excellent job of really distilling those down into four key issues, which I'll read to you here. The first is we, it wasn't a conscious decision, but the sample code that we adopted inadvertently reduced the hours of sale for our nonprofits that run those booths from 10:00 PM, which had been our practice in the past, to 9:00 PM. We heard from pretty much every single one of those this last round. We feel comfortable that moving that time back to 10:00 PM is appropriate, given the past practice here in town. The second is, will the code assist with the payment of fines imposed by allowing the ability to request payments be made under a payment plan if deemed feasible? We're gonna set that responsibility with the Director of Finance, which is a kind of a common, you know, practice in other areas where we try to work out payment arrangements. We, just for council's clarification, we actually did that on a couple of very limited bases this last year where people were not appealing their decision but didn't have $1,000 to pay, and so some of them were able to make a couple of payments to satisfy their fine. So this gives us the ability to do that moving forward. The amended code will also assist with the payment of the deposit for an appeal hearing by reducing the amount to half of the amount of the citation fine. So as we know, the citation fine, at least initially, is $1,000. A lot of the feedback we got from people that wanted to appeal their citation was that they weren't able to do so because they couldn't reasonably come up with $1,000, which understandably is a lot of money. We think it's reasonable to request that they pay $500 of their fine to hear their citation, and then obviously, if their citation is upheld, they have to pay the additional 500. If it is overturned, they'll have their $500 returned to them. Finally, the city clerk identified there were some inconsistencies in our appeal hearing language with regard to fireworks. So the language cleanup you'll see in your ordinance essentially makes the appeal section consistent with our other code enforcement sections with regard to the responsibility of the appellant to provide testimony under oath and a very specific procedure that will occur at both planning and commission and city council, which was the process we went through during the one appeal hearing that council heard a few months back. So we think this kind of, this cleans up a couple of the code issues now that we have a little experience with it, and will make for a more smooth administration of this ordinance this July. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
This is councilmember Fossey. I just wanted to make a comment that I appreciate these changes coming in for the ordinance. I think they're proper changes, and I think that accommodating payment system is really helpful. So thank you very much for coming up with this.
Vice Mayor Uribe here. I'll echo councilmember Fossey. Thank you for- Thank you for staff for taking the time to review the ordinances and then just listening to the feedback. I know we had a couple hiccups with the citation process, so it's nice to see us just going back through and cleaning it up with the amendment. Thank you.
Councilmember Cal Campbell, I agree with the vice mayor and councilmember Fosse that they did a great job in looking at it, and I think this is a great way to move ahead.
At this time, we're going to open it up for public comment. We'll be accepting public comment for the next ninety seconds via thecityclerk@riverbank.org or by calling 209-863-7172. Public comment is now open.
We're going to have the same advertisements that we had last year about the illegal fireworks.
I think we're going to do a little more. So we still have the signs that we purchased, which we'll be able to reuse. But I think we're going to try, we've noticed some other communities have picked, had larger signs created and put them at strategic intersections. You know, for example, I'm thinking of the waterfall or the entrances to town on Oakdale or on Patterson. And I've noticed that some of them have even created sort of like bright orange posts. So you're really attracting attention because as you've all heard during your appeals, one of the complaints that we got from some people that were cited was, well, I didn't know. And we're just going to, every year, build on the outreach so hopefully that it's well-known that people, A, do get cited, and B, we're very serious about enforcing it.
And we're going to use the electronic sign?
I was just going to ask that.
God willing. Yes, the answer, yes.
You can participate.
All right, the public comment period is closed. I bring it back. Is there a motion to approve the first reading and introduction to a?
I move.
Want to finish the reading?
I move that we accept item 5.2 as stated.
I second. This is Fosse.
There's a motion to approve 5.2 and a second.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Uribe.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
At this time, we will.
Motion passes 4-0.
At this time, we'll now have councilmember Barbara Martinez join us for the remainder of the council meeting. Councilmember Barbara Martinez, are you present?
Yes, I am.
Noted. Item 6.1, 2019 general plan and housing element annual progress reports. A resolution to adopt 2019 general plan and housing element annual progress reports, as well as authorizing staff to submit said reports to California Office of Planning and Research and California Department of Housing and Community Development.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a very standard item that we do every year. It's a paperwork request from Housing and Community Development and OPR. It is required primarily, it assists the state in kind of keeping track with what's happening with regard to residential development throughout California. More importantly for us is it's a pretty important requirement we need in order to maintain compliance with our housing element and, as importantly, to continue to be able to be eligible for state grants. So it's a requirement under section 65400A2 of the government code. We prepare and submit one of these every year by April. The report is required to be approved by the city's legislative body in order to remain, it keeps us in compliance with that government code section I just mentioned. And it sort of, the idea initially when these reports were requested was to sort of remind communities over and over again of the housing development and implementation goals of their general plan and housing element. The city can be eligible for a variety of housing and park grants, and in order to do that, we, like I said, we must remain in compliance with our housing element, which requires this report. Some of the grant opportunities that we commonly compete for and will be competing for again in the future are the home investment partnership program, which provides decent and affordable housing, particularly for low and very low-income households. There are 26 million in federal home funds for this coming year. And then there's the community development block grant programs, which we are very familiar with and have been successful in getting, not only for city projects, but also for projects at the local redevelopment agency and ammo depot. We have progress in the grants, zoning amendments, and job training program. A lot of the heavy lifting on it with regard to compliance of our housing element was done last cycle when the city council rezoned a couple of properties to higher density. There is one typo within the staff report, which is on page two at the very bottom. It should read 23% above the moderate income goal, not 20%. We have not received brand-new RENA numbers for a number of years now. Just so that council remembers, RENA is the Regional Housing Needs Allocation. The state is getting ready to release new RENA numbers. I can tell you that just at a staff level, there's been some concern about what those numbers will look like because I could tell you that they probably are not going to go down, especially with the push towards additional housing. We have, this last year, the numbers you're seeing in your staff report are a little bit of a misnomer because it'll show you that we have 23 above-moderate residential units of building permits issued in 2019. What I would caveat that with is Mark Wilber's project on the east side has an additional 52 permits that were pulled towards the very, very end of last year that are not quite active yet because he pulled them, developers commonly pull building permits prior to the end of the year so that they can make use of the previous code, building codes, before they're updated for the following year. So the number, all told, as those go into construction, is probably more like 75 total permits. Additionally, River Run, which you just approved a few minutes ago, has an additional 51 permits that conceivably will go into production here, we hope, this year. Other than that, we, as council knows, we've been spending a lot of time and effort trying to compete for grants, look at more affordable housing projects. We have a number of developers that have been doing due diligence on projects on the east side, as well as our newly annexed Crossroads West area. And so I expect that this year, you'll see a number, as long as the economy doesn't completely head downwards into a recession, you'll see a number of additional subdivisions go into production as we have consistent interest from builders in our area. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but other than that, it's pretty much a standard report that's going to look very similar to the previous years.
Any comments from the council?
River Run will fall into which one of these categories is at the end of page, the report on page two?
It will be, my understanding, based on conversations with the developer, is it will be in the moderate to above-moderate categories. But that's all dependent upon the product that ends up in the ground from the developer. It may be that they fall into the low-income goal as well.
Okay, and one more question. Looking at the report, we have 0% of the moderate income goal. Will we be held accountable because we didn't meet that goal?
Not yet. There's always discussion from the state about that, but one of the things that I really like to say, that a couple of my colleagues here regionally say, is cities don't build houses. We just make the land available for developers to come in and do that work. And so to some degree, one of the disagreements that cities have with the state is that we can only control so much. There has to be some financial incentive for these different private enterprises to come in and actually develop. So as of right now, there is no legislation I'm aware of currently that would penalize cities, but as you know, councilmember Barbara Martinez, that's always being discussed up in Sacramento.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Uribe here. Quick question. So as long as we're submitting those reports, we're eligible for all the grants, we're not being disqualified if we're not meeting those RENA numbers, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Someone's dog got into the act again. Any other comments? Okay, at this time, I open it for public comments for the next ninety seconds. Please call, area code 209-863-7172, or email thecityclerk@riverbank.org. general plan and housing element annual progress reports and to authorize staff to submit said reports?
This is councilmember Barbara Martinez. I motion that we approve item 6.1.
I'll second it. Councilmember Campbell.
We have motion to approve and second item 6.1.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Uribe.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 6.2, utility billing discussions and feedback.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Mayor. As you know, the transmission of COVID-19 has occurred at accelerated pace since its introduction into the United States just weeks ago. With the rates, one sec. With the rates of transmission only increasing, it's imperative that local jurisdictions do everything in their power to prepare for, respond to, and mitigate and recover from COVID-19. I won't go through the details with regard to the public, the local emergency that was issued and ratified by council last week. I think we all know that at this point. One of the main requests and concerns that we've heard from the public is what relief, if any, the city council is willing to offer with regard to our upcoming utility bill that is due at the end of this month. We've heard a number of different ideas from the public and a number of different varying concerns with regard to the bill. I will remind council, even though I don't think I have to, that this is the very first cycle that consumption is being billed on. Those bills have all gone out and been received and have been in people's homes for many weeks now. So we, given these requests and concerns, we kind of went back to the drawing board and talked a little internally about various options that council could consider. Here are some of them that we've come up with. Obviously, the first is status quo. You continue with the March 31st due date. Application of penalties will occur on April 1st, 2020, the next day. Second option is you could delay the due date two weeks to April 16th, which would avoid any penalties being assessed. Third is you could not apply penalties for delinquent bills after the March 31st due date. And four, we're already doing this, but you could affirm, we will continue, that we will not perform shut-offs for delinquent billings during this current billing cycle and any future ones that you'd like to direct us to. Finally, some members of the public have submitted suggestions that the city council considered suspending consumption billing and bill a flat rate for this month. And so those are all of the options on the table for the council, and what we'd like is direction as to which one, if any, you'd like to move forward with so that we can immediately get that information out tomorrow to the public and switch up our direction if necessary.
This is councilmember Fosse.
Just a second, please. Please, just a second. Okay, at this time, I'm going to open up for the public comment for the next two minutes, at which time I will allow the city council to provide their input. The time starts now. Please email cityclerk@riverbank.org or call 209-863-7172. Go ahead, councilmember Fosse.
Thank you. I have also talked with citizens about the bill. I think that delaying the due date will be helpful based on the number of people that are probably filing unemployment claims, especially if they're an hourly employee when they're not going to get paid during this period of time. I also agree that we don't perform the shut-off, and I'm glad you're here, we don't do that. However, I do not feel that we should go back to the flat rate. This is our first bill. I have not heard that we've had a huge amount of people calling and complaining about the bill being outrageous. I know myself, when I got my bill, it was pretty much when I was getting on the flat rate, which I was very happy to see, although concerned. But I think.
Do we have a comment?
That we continue with the bill as it is. We have extended the due date to April 16th and no shut-off.
Okay, thank you for your input. We have a public comment?
Your name, please?
Shelley Madero.
Thank you. Go ahead with your comment.
I believe that you guys should do the delay and not charge anybody any late fees.
Any further comments?
No.
Okay.
Except for all of the new housing on the backflow testing, you guys need to implement that as a monthly fee instead of charging one big lump sum because all of the new housing is getting this assessed as well this month.
Ms. Shelley Madero suggested that we delay the due date of utility billing until the 16th and do not shut off delinquent and to delay the, what was the fee?
It was, I believe, and Ms. Madero, please call back in if we're getting this incorrect, but I believe what she said was to delay the bill and to not assess penalties. Is that what you heard?
Oh, no, okay, right. That's what she said. And what was the one about the backflow?
The second comment she made, I believe, is related to, there's a yearly requirement that's not actually a City of Riverbank requirement, it's a state requirement that backflows be tested, and in some residential subdivisions that are more condo-style, they are required to have that. It's a yearly request that they have to hire a certified backflow tester, and they have to come out and provide that certification report to Public Works, which we then send to the state. It's a process. So her comment, I believe, is related to spreading that out versus. So her comment, I believe, is related to spreading that out versus having them have to pay that all at the very end of the year. That's actually generally a state charge that is required. But I will follow up with the citizen directly so I can get the details on that comment as it's not directly related to this item, but it's a good comment and we'll follow up with her.
And it's something that we probably should look into with the state.
Yep.
Okay, continue with council comments and as we wait for any additional public comment. Go ahead, Barbara Martinez.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez. I think that we should not apply the penalty because it's no one's fault that this has happened to us. And I think that we should do all that we can to try to do what we can for our residents. And I agree with the no shut off notice and extending the due date. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Campbell.
Yes, I just have a question. Have we had a lot of comments about the billing process, the amounts that they're getting?
Councilmember Campbell, do you mean related to the actual consumption charges?
Well, right, or people upset. Have you been getting a lot of calls because they're upset because their bills are out of, say, way out of order?
So we have had some comments related to that, but not as many as we would have anticipated. Most of them have been clarifications about how this works, what kinds of... If they have a leak issue, we've had a number of calls where we've gone out to verify that there's either a leak or there is no leak on properties. But overall, not an overwhelming response to that.
Okay, then to make it short with the impression you've given me, I would just reiterate what Councilmember Fossey said. I agree with what she said and that we shouldn't be, you know, doing what she said, okay?
Okay, Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor, yep, Vice Mayor Uribe here. Okay, so I think with the reduced staffing, I just want to make sure that we're not overworking our staff that we do have. I think consumption billing should remain, especially during the crisis, making sure we're conserving water. And if we're asking our residents to pay online, I think we should make it easier for them to do so. So I was glad to hear that we're not actually charging any fees or anything like that when they're paying their bills online. And I would like to see no penalties and stick with the no shut offs for this cycle.
Yeah, and council, just to clarify something. So Council, Vice Mayor Uribe asked me earlier in the week whether it, like, whether there's a financial disincentive for someone to pay online. The city covers the convenience fees that we pay to the vendor for taking those. So there is no, there's no reason from a financial perspective that someone wouldn't, shouldn't want to pay online. It's not more expensive to pay online. And so we are using this opportunity to really educate and hopefully get people to pay online where they haven't previously.
Okay, I have a couple of comments on this. As we move forward in the future, we're going to be discussing evictions. We're going to be discussing, you know, how do we handle people who cannot pay their bills? One of the things that we should be looking at is if a bona fide request not to pay, are they actually terminated or they lost their job because of COVID-19 or for any other auxiliary reason or ancillary reason? Not to just accept it, but they should have some type of proof. But for this billing cycle, I would say yes. We're getting our feet wet in this COVID-19, and we won't know the true impact until June of this year of what COVID-19 will be doing. So I would agree for this billing cycle, apply no penalties and no shut off. But we have to take a look at the future, who is taking advantage of this situation and who is actually in need. Okay, as we move forward, we could make a motion, can we?
You could, or you did provide direction.
I want to make sure I say can everyone's on board with it.
Okay.
Is everyone on board with no penalties for this billing cycle and no shut offs?
Yeah, as long as it's stated this billing cycle. I agree.
Councilmember Campbell agrees also, as long as it's stated only for this billing cycle.
Vice Mayor Uribe here, yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez, yes.
Okay, so it passes unanimously.
I need a motion in a second, please.
May I have a motion then in a second?
This is Councilmember Fossey. I make a motion that we not charge a fee for this billing cycle and do not perform shut offs on the utility bill.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez, a second.
Okay, so the motion not to apply penalties for delinquent billing after March 31, 2020, and do not perform shut offs for delinquent billing during the month of April. First and a second.
Do you want me to roll call it again?
Please.
Roll call. Councilmembers Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Uribe.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
This time, we go to item 7.1, staff comments.
Oh, Mayor, I think there's item one more.
Which one?
COVID-19 general update.
Oh, yes. I thought we were going to discuss that in closed session. Item 6.3, General Local Public Health COVID-19 Update.
Thank you, Mayor, and also thank you to the city council that are on the phone. I know this is a little awkward, but you've actually made it through a number of fairly complicated items and it has moved along, you know, fairly quickly. So thank you. This is a generalized item because there are many, 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 many issues we found that have arisen as a result of the outbreak. And you're probably going to see this general item on your agendas for the next number of council meetings because I'm going to need direction from council on specific items they want to see back for formal action. Real quick update on our local situation. There, as of when I left my office to come over here for the council meeting, there were 11 confirmed cases in Stanislaus County. We still do not have location information on those cases, and it does not appear for the time being, at least, that we're going to get that. The... I will be doing essentially a once a week or every other week public liaison posting at the EOC. Tomorrow is my assigned day, so I'll be able to report back to council on the happenings that are occurring in the EOC currently. As you probably have read, the primary focus the last couple of days has been trying to make sure that there's adequate PPE equipment for our first responders as well as our hospital workers, not just here but throughout the state. Locally, the major issues that we've been dealing with have to do with the governor's order. Cities and the county were not notified that the governor was going to make that order until, I didn't even know about the press conference until almost an hour ahead of time, and we were not given sort of advance notice about what would be announced. So as a result, the statewide stay-at-home order or shelter-in-place, whatever you'd like to say, has identified a number of essential and non-essential businesses that, right now at least, there seems to be a request on a voluntary basis that these businesses close down. The governor has indicated that there may be some regulatory penalties that might result if businesses don't comply. We've been getting a lot of phone calls into City Hall about whether their business, someone's business is essential versus non-essential. So we're just doing our best to guide our local residents about, based on the information we have from the state, about what constitutes essential and non-essential. For those businesses that are not closing, that are clearly non-essential, the approach that we have taken locally is just asking them for voluntary compliance at this time. The city attorney's office has recommended that the council may want to provide direction to staff to bring forward an urgency ordinance, which would allow us to monetarily cite and fine businesses that just refuse to comply with the governor's order. So that is one issue that has been raised. Another issue that has been raised has been related to evictions. Some cities in California have passed ordinances prohibiting evictions during this time. I was asked before the meeting whether or not these ordinances would include commercial tenants as well. You know, for example, if you have a hair salon and you are not able to stay open because of the order, you know, is there some protection for those businesses? I do not have an answer to that as of this meeting. But certainly, if council was interested in directing us to bring an ordinance to you, we would make sure we clarify that. I will say with regard to that matter, it is slightly less pressing only because I was informed by the chief of police here and I had it verified by another source that the sheriff's department civil division, which handles eviction notices and evictions through their civil division, have suspended that activity for the time being. In fact, I believe some of those deputies have been reassigned to patrol during, you know, the course of this emergency. So it may not be immediately urgent to us, but if there was desire from the council, we would put something together. Furthermore, there have been other requests that have been coming in from various groups that council considered, different resolutions. One that has passed across email today related to Medicare for All concept. Obviously, council can't act on these items tonight because we don't have them specifically agendized or things for you to consider. But what I'd like as a function of your discussion this evening is some direction on these three specific issues that I've raised so that we know where we could put some resources in to bring those items back to you in a timely manner. Finally, I will also mention to you that we've been working very hard, pretty much every single day, most of the day, trying to develop a variety of different staffing models depending on what, how stringent any kind of local or statewide lockdown gets. And that to include making sure that we're trying to continue all of the essential services, which at this time are essentially all of our services. And then if that order becomes more stringent in the future, finding ways to scale back ones to only the services that we would call essential for living, i.e. water, wastewater, public safety, general maintenance, administration, finance, et cetera. So that's a generalized update for council on those matters, and I'm just looking for some direction on the following.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to open it up for public comment. Public has the ability to call in while the council discusses this item. Is there any comments from the...
Vice Mayor.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor Uribe here. So I'll make a couple of comments here. So I am for the temporary eviction moratorium. I'd like to see a carve out for domestic violence circumstances. I'm glad to hear that Stanislaus Superior Court is not having any jury trials at the moment. I'd like to ask that they also suspend all pending eviction cases and reject new eviction case filings. I'm also calling on the sheriff to suspend unlawful detainer actions and enforcement of evictions. The last thing we want to do is to add to the housing instability and to ensure we're not making this crisis worse. I'd also like to ask the sheriff to suspend immigration enforcement for unsheltered population. We have suspended code enforcement unless there's a health and a safety concern. So all these things that I've mentioned help minimize the spread of the virus. So then this brings up a larger issue within our, you know, within our nations. We have 44 million that do not have health insurance. If you lose your job, the number of uninsured is going to grow. So if we, if, we have to take care of our people, and we should be demanding our federal government do more. If the only thing that's keeping us from insuring everyone is administrative costs, then let's switch our system to one that has minimal administrative costs, which would be that Medicare that Sean mentioned. Let's expand the program. It'll be cheaper than the current system, and then everyone's covered. And we are in a public health crisis. So with council concurrence, I would like to consider an item, a resolution for Medicare for All. It'll be our way for us to keep the pressure on the federal government to work towards healthcare for all. Thank you.
Councilmember Campbell, do you have any comment?
Just, I agree with Vice Mayor Ruby pretty much, but I also have looked at what the state of California is doing. And what they're saying is let the rents go for the time being. But they've also added, because they're looking at the people that own these facilities are renting, they've added that in the future, when things get better, it's between the landlord and the tenants to work out a way to get the back rent, you know, paid to those people. Because they've got an investment, and if this went on for six months, some of these people, or eight months or even two months, they could put them behind if they've done investment in this property to rent it, and they could lose it or whatnot. But I think it should be between the landlord and the tenant to work something feasible out in the future as they go on.
Councilmember Fossey.
I agree with the temporary hold on eviction. I understand what Councilmember Campbell is saying, and hopefully these are definitely suspended any new ones. If they've been going on, you know, I think they need to be looked at a case by case. In regards to the Medicare, just like on immigration and them coming in and checking to see if they're citizens, we really don't have any control on that. So I am not in favor of doing a resolution. I think it's a state and a federal thing, and I don't see how the city would have any control over that. Thank you.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez.
I think that we should also include in our non-eviction of commercial businesses. As I stated before, that we're all in this together, and we need to do what we can to take care of our businesses and also our residents of Riverbank. And it's really hard to say what we can control, can and cannot control with the sheriff's department. I am glad to see that they are moving, well, they have suspended some of their evictions and some of their actions. And I do know that, I can't remember the name of the ordinance or law, something that they have where, you remember they were talking about that they wanted to come out and talk to the communities about what the sheriff can and cannot do? I'm thinking it was top, I want to say, is it 64? I don't really remember now, but anyway. So just in looking at keeping with that and what all that means. Pardon me? Man, I think that COVID-19 is something that has everyone afraid. And if people could remember to stay in your homes and your social distancing, I mean, that's all that we can really do. Thank you.
All right, the sheriff and Supervisor Olson was going to hold a meeting, town hall type meeting, but because of this COVID-19, they have set that aside. type meeting, but because of this COVID-19, they have set that aside. That would address what the sheriff was doing to the, with the public and how that was going to affect individuals. As for evictions, I think if we do any resolution, that is to support what the actions that the sheriff is undertaking now, which is no evictions, that includes commercial and residential, and that we should support what, what his actions are on that. And I believe that if individuals, both commercial and residential, talk to the landlords now, they can make some type of an agreement. For example, a commercial, nonessential business can't do business right now. It would be quite a setback for both the business owner and the landlord if the person moves out, because the landlord cannot rent it to another nonessential business during that time. And to make concessions to bring in a new business, whether it's build out or reduction in rent, would not be a smart business. So that is something we can advise our business, our businesses that are having difficulties or have to shut down during this crisis. And this crisis is not going to be going away before the end of July, and it's going to be a lot worse in the future. As for Medicare for All, I believe that Councilmember Fossey, you're correct. That is above our pay grade. If we want to support a Medicare for All, we write our individual letters, but there is nothing we can do to enforce a Medicare for All within the city of Riverbank, nor do we have the funds to pay for the shortages in medical and others. So we are going to bring this back on a, on a each-meeting basis, and we may have to have special meetings to deal with this crisis.
Mayor, one thing, so I'm going to need clarification on one item from Cal or Darlene or both. I hear from Councilmember Fossey, Mayor O'Brien, I understand Councilmember Reba's position with regard to the Medicare for All resolution. I need to know Councilmember Campbell and Barbara Martinez, is this something you want to see at a future meeting? If so, great. If not, let me know, then we can, I want to address one other item that I don't think council spoke on.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez here, and I think we can discuss it in the future.
Councilmember Campbell, I agree with Councilmember Martinez that we can discuss it further in the future to try to get the best for our community.
Okay, so the other item that I need a little direction on, I have direction on the eviction ordinance, we'll bring forward what you've, what you've stated. With regard to the, one of the issues that we're going to really have a tough time with as this order becomes more and more stringent, and I believe it will, is getting businesses to comply with shutting down. And so I would like some council direction as to whether or not you'd like to see us bring forward an ordinance, an urgency ordinance to be able to assess fines to the businesses that refuse to shut down.
Vice Mayor Reba here, yes, I, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Sorry about that. Vice Mayor Reba here, yes, I would like to see some type of way to hold businesses that are not essential, that are not listening to the governor's order, a way to fine them. If we can, can I also ask something about the previous item, the eviction ordinance? Is there any concurrence on including the carve out for the domestic violence circumstances? Thank you.
Yeah, what we'll do, just to make it simple for tonight, is we'll bring forward something that has that in there, and if council votes to keep it in, then you can adopt it that way. If you want to edit it, you can.
Thank you for the clarification. Thank you.
Councilmember Campbell, I've got just something I'd like to say regarding this, and I think we need to do something with the businesses that are not following the governor's procedure. But I don't think we should fine them immediately the first time. I think we should let them know by contacting them that they are not in compliance. After that, they should clearly understand it, because there's a lot of confusion going on with what should be and what shouldn't be there. Then after that, then I would support giving some kind of fining, because they need to realize what they're doing can be hurting the rest of the public.
All right, that is something that we can discuss. Here's what the sheriff is doing on those. If someone is, let's say, a bar and is open, the sheriff would go not towards shutting them down or fining them, because that has very little impact. But if you report them to the ABC and their license is taken away, that impacts them greatly. So if we do the same thing for any of the other businesses, find out what the violation is and who, what leverage is out there that can, you know, get them to comply. For example, in Patterson, there was a restaurant that's open and having people seated for eating. They sell alcohol. You have to shut down. If not, we'll have your alcohol license removed. That's a great deal of their business attraction. So I believe in our discussions, we take a look at what leverages we can have against people who are not complying. And most people that aren't in belief of this virus, I can get by without it. The statistics are staggering. Fifty percent in Stanislaus County will contract the virus that we know of. It could be higher than that. Of that 50%, 10%, which is around 50,000 people, will require some type of medical or medication or hospitalization. Of that, 1% to 4% will die. That's 5,000 or greater will die in Stanislaus County if we don't flatten this curve out and if we don't comply with this social distancing. So that, those are the facts right now, and it's getting greater and greater in other countries for the death rate. But most of us in this, in the city council, city hall, will contract it at one point. Most of it will be a mild headache, a little bit of a fever, and a little cough, nothing too dramatic. But without knowing it, you could be a carrier and touching surfaces, which last night was discovered, the virus can live on surfaces for over 17 days. So I could be infected, I touch a surface here, and Councilmember Campbell comes back in two weeks, touches that same surface, he can contract if I had the virus just from that simple contact. So it is imperative that we stop the businesses, but hit it where it hurts, not by a fine, and they keep doing it. But that can be discussed at our next council meeting or special council meeting. We're just going to move it forward.
This is Councilmember Fossey. Did the governor, was the governor's, they, what is it, stay inside or stay at home? Was that a suggestion or was it actually an order? Because I don't believe it was an actual enforceable order yet. And if it's not an actual forcible order, how can we do anything except go in and tell those businesses we'd appreciate it if they closed?
The way it reads is an order. In fact, there's a section at the, I'll forward it around to council. There's a section at the very end, if I'm not mistaken, that references infractions of the order are citable under a very, under a specific section of, I believe it's the government code. So, but, but with that said, you heard the governor in his remarks state that enforcement, you know, akin to something like a martial law, was not his, his idea or his concept. It was, we want to try to apply social pressure to make sure that people are complying. With that said, you know, we talked about this last time, every single day, something changes, and so it would not surprise me whatsoever to see that order tightened up here in the short term. The bigger question for us is, if we have a business that is not complying and refuses to comply, when we ask them to voluntarily comply, we don't have any mechanism under our city ordinances currently to go in and, and assess them a fine to get them to comply. And so what I would be concerned about is those couple bad actors that continue along and create a situation where you might have a worse public health crisis because they refuse to close.
Technically, it's a misdemeanor, and what we want you to think about is whether we add that to our administrative penalty section, citation section.
I think we need to research that more and see what our choices are and what, you know, I like what the mayor said, hit them where it hurts more than, because they're not thinking globally, they're just thinking, well, I need the business and if people are going to come, which unfortunately people will, they're not going to understand why they have to close. But if we were to hit them with their licenses and stuff, it would be, but we need to find out if it's actually something we can legally do and what are the things that we can legally do and bring that back as far as what we need to do to put those in place.
Yeah, the, again, the thing that we can do is impose the administrative penalties. It's up to the county to enforce those other things that we're talking about.
Tom, one question the mayor asked was, could we structure an ordinance that allows us to revoke their business license for noncompliance?
Well, the business license is, you know, just a, it's fee generating, that's its only purpose, so I'm not sure if we could do that. We could probably do something more akin to just making it, it not related to the license, but just unable to do business otherwise.
So, Tom, maybe what we could do, given the feedback, is bring forward a draft and give them a couple different, a little bit of analysis on the legal side of what we can and can't do.
Sure.
All right.
But I would like to say, this is Councilman Fossey, Councilmember Fossey, I would like to reiterate that I do like the idea of us going out there and trying to reason with them, though, in the meantime, as is possible with our staffing.
This is Councilmember Barbara Martinez. I would, all the conversations that we're having right now up to this point, I would like to say thank you to all of the businesses that have closed, that are thinking of their, their customers, their families, and taking their situation seriously, because a lot of people aren't. And I just want to say thank you to those that are thinking in the right direction.
Okay, staff has direction, and we're going to move on with public, I mean, with staff comments.
Thank you. Very briefly, I know I informed council, but just in case there are members of the public watching, in consultation with our, with other communities, our legal team, Parks and Rec, we have, effective Friday of last week, closed all of the playgrounds throughout the community. We attempted to do our best to post and tape off those facilities, just in the abundance of caution. We don't want a situation where we've created an area where the virus can spread. The parks will remain open, that will not change, and we encourage people to use those parks as long as they're practicing social distancing. Finally, just want to mention real quick, a big, huge thank you to the Riverbank staff. The entire crew that we have here have continued to show up to work at their assigned shifts, continued to be engaged when they're off shift, having numerous phone calls and emails throughout the entire weekend. Everybody has been sort of all hands on deck. It's been, it's too bad that this kind of thing highlights that. You've always had a very dedicated staff, but especially in this time of need, I just want to really thank the team, because we wouldn't have made as much progress as we have without them. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fossey.
Thank you, Mayor. I just would like to reiterate again about the playgrounds. I see lots of posts on Facebook where people are at the playgrounds. Playgrounds are made of metal mostly, and metal does hold this virus for 12 hours, my understanding, maybe even longer. So go to the park, walk, stay six feet apart, but do not cross that yellow line, don't take the yellow takedown, please stay away from that. The other thing is, one thing I'm noticing, and I'm practicing this myself, when you go to the store, don't take your kids, don't take your whole family, get a list and just be one person going. Don't expose everybody to everybody else in the store or yourself to everybody else that's there. One person goes to the store, one person goes and gets, if you decide to go, and support the businesses, which I highly suggest somebody do, everybody do as much as they can, support the businesses by going and getting dinner or lunch to take, but one person, don't take your whole family. Limit your exposure. And again, I appreciate the staff, and I appreciate our citizens for following the guidelines. It's really appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell.
Yes, I received an email from the California Grocers Association just a little after five this evening, and I'm going to read just a couple things from it just to enlighten some people. Basically, they're starting a buy smart, don't overfill your cart program, and they're saying the bare shelves people may be experiencing do not indicate lack of supply. It is a temporary result of people overbuying, given the understandable worry right now. We are launching a statewide earned and social media campaign today to reassure Californians and encourage them to buy smart, don't overfill your cart, there is enough for all. And so just pass that on, because we need to think about that. When I go into the markets, whether it's O'Briens or Targets, I see a lot of empty shelves, and I'm still wondering why, because I think people are putting too much away, and that's hurting other people that need the items. And I would also like to say, I think we had very good discussions tonight, we will build on those discussions and come to conclusions. Thank you.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez.
I just want everyone to be safe, think about others around you. These are unprecedented times when we need to think about how we can help each other to remain safe. And also, if you know of a senior or elderly person that may need some services, we are in touch with the social services so that we can try to get some resources out to them. So just do what you can to remain safe.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank staff, residents, businesses that are doing their part during this crisis. There is a House resolution that's going, that's in Congress right now, it's H.R. 6139. It's the Healthcare Worker Protection Act of 2020. There's nurses across the country reporting that they're not receiving the proper staffing, personal protective equipment, education. So I'm asking everybody if we can share this resolution and support it, call your local congressman, let's get this thing passed. I've also spoken to a couple of senior citizens in the, in the area, and they don't have access to a computer, but I, as far as I understand, 211 has been set up for those COVID-19 updates. So if you call 211, you can receive those updates through there. And then just quickly, the census is still happening, it's April 1st, and members of the public can respond online, by phone, or by mail. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to reassure the public that you still have complete access to your elected officials via email and telephone calls, and also to the staff. The staff is here every day, and they will be answering. The staff is here every day and they will be answering either emails or phone calls, so please don't think that we're shut down, we are not. We are trying to protect the staff and the public from the spread of this COVID-19. The Office of Emergency Services are meeting on a daily basis for a period of 90 to 120 minutes at a time, and I have the pleasure to be the participant for that. And they were discussing with the sheriff, that's why we knew what the sheriff was doing, what the sheriff is doing, what the staff is doing. One of the things, Dr. V is not going to release any information on where infected individuals are with COVID-19 until it reaches a certain number. I've asked for them to explain why that certain number, because I don't understand it. There is an emergency disaster that is supposed to be accommodating towards any individual who could come in contact or know of where the illness is. This is most notable during an Ebola outbreak at one time, and I want to also ensure, assure the public that our staff here in Riverbank is fully trained and ready to respond, and we are working closely with the Office of Emergency Services. One of the things that can help our staff be very productive, Churchill White, Tom, is if we could start look, doing a lot of our administrative stuff that have been, items that have been backlogged or haven't been updated, such as the municipal code. If we can start reviewing those, we can make sure that our staff is working, gainfully employed while they're away from the desk and working from home and doing the items that we have yet to accomplish over the last seven and a half years. The last thing, Vice Mayor, you brought up the 211. 211 is standing up even though you can get information. It's out of Kern County, and we are, we as the Stanislaus County OES is making, giving, providing inputs specifically for Stanislaus County, but that has yet to be stood up. And that information is being updated now, and each night at 5:30 PM, the county OES, somebody from that office will provide an update. Tonight it was Sheriff Durski, I did not get to view that, but it can be viewed on Facebook or also on YouTube. So if you'll go take a look at that, that'll provide all the updates that we have from Dr. V, Kristen Olson, and the sheriff. Okay, with that, we'll proceed to closed session. Anyone from the public wishing to have input into this closed session, please call now at 863-7172, or provide an email to thecityclerk@riverbank.org. Item 8.1 is a threat to public service or facilities pursuant to government code 54957. Consultation, City of Riverbank, Director of Emergency Services. I will wait about 30 seconds and see if we have any inputs on the closed session.
Excuse, while we're waiting, do we have a link to the closed session?
Yeah, so Council Tom and Maricela, we're going to email out here in just a moment the link for the Zoom meeting.
Okay.
And we're going to test it out, see if it works for everyone, so if you have a tablet, you can access it that way, or, or a PC, or, for example, Councilmember Fossey has an iPhone and she already has a Zoom app, she can click through that way and connect as well. Also works on, if you have the app, also works on Droid devices. So, as soon as the mayor is done waiting for public comment, we'll take a minute or two and then we'll send that out.
Thank you.
With that comment, we now close for, closed session. Item 9.1, report from closed session on 8.1, threat to public services or facilities. Direction has been provided to staff. Our next meeting is held on Tuesday, April 14th at 6:00 PM. This meeting is now adjourned.